All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I ask our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Invite you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we recognize a quorum of our board with six members present in person, and Tony Schmidt is participating via phone. Since we have a board member participating by phone, tonight's votes will all be done by roll call. And as I've been known in the past, to forget that from time to time, I'm going to ask that my fellow committee, fellow board members help remind me of that. So, the agenda as it was posted was provided to all of us. And so, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I would move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All right, hearing none as soon as I find my roll call slips here. There we go. All right, Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Ongert.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Weigert votes yes. And Mr. Rebholz.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have an approved agenda. We'll move through then to our student reports, and we have our East and West representatives here tonight. And so, I'm going to invite forward from East High School Alexis Gugliotti. So Alexis, good evening. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to be here.
All right.
As you guys know, my name's Alexis Gugliotti. I am a senior at East High School. Since the last board meeting that I attended, there have been many things going on within the student body. For athletics, wrestling was busy at state. They had three people, Liam Pienkowski, Carter Henchel, and Casey Gish, who were all recognized as second-team All-Conference. The gymnastics team was also at state recently with McKenna Orth, who placed seventh on beam, sixth on floor, and 14th place all around. Our boys' basketball team also had a great run in their regional games. Spring sports are starting up within the next couple of weeks as well. Not only have our sports been working hard, but so have our clubs. Shrek the Musical was great, and the ticket sales were about 600 per night, which was amazing. Student Council has been busy planning for the charity dance this month. There will be a dress-up week leading up to the dance on the 19th, and East NHS will be raising money on that Friday. Finally, the ACT is tomorrow, so good luck to all of the juniors.
Thank you for your update. And now, we invite forward from West High School Raymond Spores. Raymond, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. So, last Friday, West seniors Brandon Reichert and John Vallone competed in the annual Automotive Dealers Association of Mega Milwaukee Technicians of Tomorrow competition at the Milwaukee International Auto Show. This event pits the top high school automotive technology students against one each other in written and hands-on skill competitions for prizes including Snap-on toolsets and tech college scholarships. Our team, our high school team finished fourth out of approximately 75 schools entered, so great job to those students who participated in that. Winter sports are also wrapping up, and that means many athletes have been representing West Bend West at WIAA state tournaments across the state. So, this past weekend, Mel Prinsel and Michaela Chibuko competed in floor exercise and in uneven bars and vault respectively at the WIAA state gymnastics meet. The West bowling team qualified as a team for the state tournament this past weekend in Appleton. And on February 27th, two West Bend West wrestlers, Connor Mircola and Cole Mircola, were each named WIAA state champions in their respective weight classes. So, congrats to all winter athletes on a great season, and good luck to all spring athletes, as several spring sports begin practice this week. And to anyone wishing to attend any spring sporting events, they're all posted on the West Athletics page. And other athletic news, West senior Brianna Martin competed this past weekend in the Wisconsin High School Powerlifting State Meet, where she did very well. She was one of six students from around the state to earn scholarships from the state organization, so great job for that. And on Saturday, downtown West Bend welcomed Spartan Courtney Rummel back into town after returning from the Olympics in Beijing. So, a ceremony was held at Old Sellers Park with music, speeches, and celebration, and that was really fun. Finally, tomorrow, West Bend juniors will be taking the ACT. Good luck to all juniors and to all freshmen, sophomores, and seniors. Remember, there's no in-person instruction. However, virtual schoolwork is due at 2:25 in order to be marked present for the day.
All right, a good reminder. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for keeping us connected. All right. Next, we have a donation acceptance item, so we'll consider the Youth Impact Club donation acceptance. And Superintendent Wimmer, I think you were going to kick this off?
Yeah, I would like to welcome to the podium. It's the Two Jackies. We have Jackie Schmalt, who is a teacher, parent, and advisor of the Youth Impact Club for our high school. She'll talk a little bit about that club. And then, a community member, owner of the gym, and donor Jackie Vasquez. So, I'd like to turn it over to both of you.
Yeah, thank you very much. The club that I advise, along with Sally Hoyer, was founded in 2019, and it's called the Youth Impact Club. It really kind of came into existence out of Life of Hope, the local suicide prevention organization that sadly had to fold. But our student version of that has just been doing really, really well. Our primary goal is to promote mental wellness, prevent suicide, and reduce the stigma for mental illness. And the funds that we've raised up to this point have been from the 5K that we run every fall, and we've been able to do pretty amazing things with that. One of our goals was to, with our first fundraiser, was to raise enough to purchase a curriculum from, well, not, I should, I use that term loosely, a program through the Hope Squad, which is a really well-researched method for training our students to be on the ground and be able to help their fellow classmates and even their family members who might be having a mental health crisis. And we train all year during the resource time that we have and any time after school. Last week, about 25 of our students got trained in the QPR method, which is kind of like CPR, but for mental health. And we have just a lot of kids involved and a lot of interest in that club. We also, we're trying to, we've done a lot with the kids in trying to educate them. And last year, we used some of the funds to buy the rights to a movie about a teenage girl who survived a suicide attempt. And I felt that it was very inspirational, and the kids gave us that feedback as well. I'm excited about this year because next week, on Thursday, Kevin Hines will be speaking to a select group at the high school. He is a nationally-known speaker, author, movie maker, and our fundraising is going to host him, and he will give a really incredible message. I've seen him before, read his book, all of that good stuff. And I'm very excited about that. But what's even more exciting is what Jackie has done for us recently, and I think I'd like to give her a minute to talk about that. I don't want to steal her thunder, so it's all yours.
All right, thank you. I wasn't prepared to say anything. So, I, so I set out and wanted to set a world record, a Guinness World Record, and you probably don't know, but a Turkish getup is a lift where you start on the floor, you come to standing, and then back to the floor. So, I wanted to set the record. I ended up breaking the record. I did 165 Turkish getups with 53 pounds in one hour. And use that. I could show you. They are my favorite movement. I won't do 165. But I did, yes, whole group. I didn't want to just do the record. Strength has a greater purpose, so I wanted to use it for a fundraiser, and I had lost my brother to suicide last summer and found out from a friend about this amazing group in the high school. And right away, I just knew that that's who I wanted my funds to go to. Thank you, guys, for having this group. I know that suicide is a topic that not a lot of people want to bring up, and I'm just glad that you guys bring attention to it. And at that vital age of high schoolers, it really makes an impact, so I was happy to be able to do that. We raised, I don't have the exact amount. It was over $6,000. I think I ended up with just under 100 separate donations. So, I was really, really grateful for that. It was awesome to see that, so I'm happy to help you guys.
Yeah. And given that your brother is not a, was not a high school student, we're going to try to get, do something to get out in the community. We haven't really finalized what we're going to do with the donation yet, but we want to take our message a little bit wider and go beyond the high school with that. So, we'll let you know what we come up with and honor her brother as well as everyone else that's at risk or that we've already lost. So, thank you.
Jackie, what's your last name?
Vasquez.
I'll make a motion to accept the very generous donation from Jackie Vasquez, and thank you very much for the fundraising effort. It'll go to good use, so I'll make a motion to accept.
All right. All right, motion and second to accept this very generous donation. Thank you. Yes, round of applause, absolutely. Any additional or final discussion? If not, I will call the motion. Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz.
Absolutely.
Ms. Dove.
Big yes.
Mr. Ongert.
Big yes.
Ms. Weigert votes yes. And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Again, we appreciate your inspiration and hard work, the generosity of the community. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we move on to the recognition of winter state qualifiers, East and West Boys Diving. And Aaron Felber, West Athletic Director, is going to walk us through this presentation. Aaron.
I first want to get Jackie to come coach for us, so.
Yeah.
Let's talk after this meeting. I think all our students could benefit from you. But I am here to honor our fantastic divers from both East and West High School. Molly Hanks is behind me, the East Athletic Director. I know we're both very proud of their accomplishments, so I'm going to call up Coach Pete DeTunck, and I also have Head Coach Jim Socksey here as well. Come on up, boys.
When I'm going to speak first?
Okay.
Hang on a second. This past, I might get emotional, so beware. This past fall, I had something very unexpected happen, but very exciting, and I want to thank the West Bend School District, especially the Athletic Department, for inducting me into the High School Athletic Hall of Fame. I have been blessed to have been an athlete for the West Bend High School class of 1969, and even more blessed to have been, have had the opportunity to coach the boys' swim and dive team, also girls, for the past 47 years, 44 of them as head coach. Usually, one receives this honor after retiring or expiring. I have no plans to do either of these. Thank you very much for this outstanding honor. Now, I also want to congratulate all the fall and winter sports seasons, athletes, and coaches for their dedication to their teams and to their great accomplishments. Now, I'm going to, guys, you can go up there. You're supposed to.
Oh, right there.
Right there?
We got a new camera.
New camera? Okay. Ooh, you've got to stand next to the coaches. This young man, I've got to tell you just a little bit about. He's been coaching high school diving for 27 years. Coach Pete DeTunck is a graduate of East High School, the class of 1987. He was an outstanding diver in his own rights and finished second at state that year and just has been our right-hand person to go to the diving, and they don't want me coaching them. They had me for a day. And Coach has said, look at Tevo, this coach. One of the great things that has happened, Pete has had this honor a couple of times, but he was named the Division One Diving Coach of the Year for the state last year. And now, I'm going to let, and now I'm going to just let Pete talk about these three outstanding divers.
Thanks for the introduction, Jim. It's great to have a head coach like Jim to take care of the swim program for as many decades as he has and to bring that kind of level of experience to the program and to this district. I want to recognize these boys right here because standing in front of you is some, the best talent that this city and this school has ever seen on a diving board, ever. One of them, Jan Lancer, broke the state record at the state meet just a few weeks ago. It was, it was truly the most incredible athletic event that I have ever been to in my life. And I've been to NCAAAs, I've been to Olympic trials, I've been to different sporting events. It was amazing, maybe because he's an athlete that I had a small part in his, in his tutelage. But he wasn't the only one who just had a great performance at the state meet and a great season and a great career at the high school. The boy sitting next to, or standing next to him, Austin Barco, finished, finished ninth at the state meet. Again, an amazing performance and a great soul and a great heart as well. These two are both seniors. We've got one kid coming back next year, and his name is Ryan, Ryan Meyer.
Two kids coming back.
Well, the only one that went to state that's coming back. Ryan's a junior, great diver, finished 13th at the state meet. Just want to say thank you to the school for your support of our program and for the things that you're doing for all of the kids in the district.
Coach, where are seniors going next year?
Well, Austin still has, he's thinking about going to tech school for construction, and we'll see how that plays out. As long as he doesn't put any more nails in his hands, he'll probably be okay.
It's not so good for swimming.
Thankfully, they're divers. They just go to the bottom of the pool, and then they push off, and they try to swim as little as possible. Kind of the goal. Unlike the, what was it, the Principals last year after the state meet. Jan is going to be diving at this man's alma mater for UW-Madison.
I must, I'm going to say this, it's always great, there are 12 events in, for the swim team, and they're just one event, but all year long, for the past years, and we can go back a long time, just one example, we started the Cedarburg Invite, the swimming part, the other 11 events, with 53 points. We were in first place. We started sectionals with 56 points. We were winning the meet. And we started the state meet with 30 points, and we were winning the meet, and with 30 points, they ended up 20th overall. They did.
One last thing. There aren't an awful lot of athletes from our district who end up being Athletic All-Americans. Jan Lancer is an Athletic All-American from his junior year, and after breaking the state record this year by about 45, 42 points?
No, it was more like 60.
Okay, 60 points. I was not a math major. I think he's well on his way to being a two-time All-American. Nice job.
We guys turned for a picture real quick for him, please.
Nice job, boys.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I got out of that picture.
Coaches, thanks for that fantastic presentation, and to these young gentlemen who obviously worked very, very hard and accomplished, accomplished a lot. So, congratulations. Thank you for coming. All right. So, this is the time I pause and say, we'll, we're going to continue on with our board meeting, and we always welcome anyone to stay for as much of the board meeting as they would like. But if anyone wishes to depart because they have schoolwork or whatever it may be, this is the time where you can, where you can easily slide out. Thank, that's quite all right. Absolutely. We'll just pause for a moment. So with that, next on our agenda is public participation, and I have, let's see, five. Five public participation comment cards. I'll do last call on the cards. Any other ones to come forward? All right. Seeing none, I will read the Board Policy 187 announcement. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time. Copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or an non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name in relation to the district. The information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So, I will invite participants forward to speak. There will be a visible timer to help you manage your time. I will also alert speakers as to who is on deck. And also, to ensure that all participants are heard and the meeting runs efficiently, please refrain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. So with that, I invite forward Chris Thompson. And on deck is Mr. Bill Schultz. And Mr. Thompson says you're a parent, resident, and a taxpayer, and we have your address on file. Next three minutes are yours.
All right, thank you. Last week, Andrew Sarno invited me to visit with him to learn more about the financial operations of our district. I want to first thank Mr. Sarno for his transparency and his willingness to engage in the community, to engage the community to understand more about how it all works. However, some of the things I learned left me feeling pretty concerned about our financial health for the future. I'm no financial expert, but I'm going to step through some of the things I learned. For one thing, school districts essentially get the bulk of their funding from two sources, money that comes from the state and federal programs and from the property tax levy. The amount of money a district receives from the state is measured primarily by two factors, student enrollment and the average property value of the community. Over the past few years, it seems that the district is experiencing a decline in state and federal aid. This is primarily due to declining enrollment and increasing property values, leaving us with a gap in the funding we need to operate at the status quo. How have we been covering that gap? Well, in fairness to the district, some of that has been through the use of a one-time-only state and federal grant monies. But I'm sad to say that it hasn't been nearly enough, and it's not sustainable. Since 2020, the district has been quietly raising the dollar amounts on the property tax levy to offset some of this financial gap, couching it under the talking point of keeping the mill rate flat. Between 2019 and 2020, our tax levy dollars increased by 5.5 million. It's a nearly 14% increase from the previous year. This tax hike occurred during the worst of the pandemic crisis, with many people unable to work due to lockdowns, shuttering businesses, and other debilitating circumstances. Incomes were falling or disappearing entirely, but the district saw fit to pass along an enormous tax increase, all the while celebrating that mill rate stayed flat. Just last year, our tax levy dollars increased another 3 million. And during the last board meeting, we heard Mr. Sarno point out that we are again looking at an additional $2.3 million gap in our revenue for the next year. It makes me wonder how the board and the district plan to address this. Many folks in this room remember the Great Recession that started back in 2008. During those years, my family needed to rely on state programs to keep the lights on for ourselves, and I'm grateful for those programs. Several years later, as our situation improved, we found ourselves at a jumping-off point where the reduction in state-funded benefits left us with a gap in our finances that forced us to make some difficult choices, tighten our belts, and make sacrifices in order to sustain ourselves. It was a challenge, but we got creative and resourceful, and I look back on those times as fondly as any other chapter of my life. It's clear to me now that we're on a similar track here, and it's going to require us to make some difficult choices, tighten our belts, and make sacrifices. These financial hurdles are solvable, but only if we work together. No longer will it be acceptable for us to solely take backdoor tax increases to solve our financial problems, certainly not in the midst of an uncertain economic climate and record levels of inflation for basic necessities. Whether the board changes in April or not, we are going to need to work together to get us healthy. I would urge Superintendent Wimmer and the board to make this a top priority for issue discussing during the board meetings immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Invite forward Mr. Bill Schultz, and then on deck is Ms. Jody Geenan. Mr. Schultz, I've got your address here. It says resident, father. So if that is correct, the next three minutes are yours.
Thanks, Chris. As of late, I feel as if Aaron Lewis's patriotic anthem, "Am I the Only One?", was written for not only my fellow Patriots, but myself as well, and it goes like this. Am I the only one here tonight shaking my head, thinking something ain't right? Is it just me? Am I losing my mind? Am I standing on the edge of the end of time? Am I the only one, tell me I'm not, who thinks they're taking all the good we got and turning it bad? What I'm about to say, I would like to be known for public record. At this past weekend's Common Sense Citizens of Washington County Voter Forum Event, I got to hear all four candidates running for West Bend School District School Board give their opinions on certain topics. Some things don't come to surprise. Aaron, you stated how you're working on emailing and communication. I'm sorry, but I don't see that, as I'm still waiting for you to respond to the multiple emails I've sent you over the last four to five months. You also stated that when you receive issues and concerns that need to be dealt with, you just pass it on to someone else, pass it down to administration. That doesn't show the lack of compassion and willingness to not only do your job, but do what's best for the students. I don't know why you're on the school board, and I don't know why you're going for reelection. Paul, you mentioned how incidents on the bus have decreased because administrators have been riding on those very buses the last few weeks, but I've heard multiple reports saying that this is not correct. The community deserves clarification on this topic. Paul and Aaron, you both said that the teachers are getting sick and tired of having to learn new material to teach to the students. Get ready, I have a wonderful plan in place. Stop voting to approve it, it's that simple. It isn't surprising to hear Nancy Justman say, "School boarding, school board meetings haven't been very fun lately." This is what happens when a group of concerned parents band together as one, as they've had enough of the bullshit that this district has given us. To vote in, to vote in the candidates.
Please rein in your language.
May I have some extra time added for that interruption? Okay. After hearing John Donaldson and Melanie Ergot speak this past weekend, I can't help but love how they speak highly about holding people accountable for their actions, students, teachers, administrators, school board members. I'd like to close by saying this. John Donaldson and Melanie Ergot would be a wonderful addition to the school board because of their new ideas and strategies that they've made public about not voting to approve any action item that they are given, just to stand, blend in with the crowd, and they would rather stand alone. We need leaders, not followers, followers in the school district and the school board, which is why I will be voting for John and Melanie on April 5th, as I wish anybody that hears this does the same.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. We'll move on to Ms. Jody Geenan, and Mr. Cameron Merkel will be on deck. Ms. Geenan, you, have you listed as taxpayer? I have your address on file. Thank you. The next three minutes are yours.
Good evening. My name is Jody Geenan. I'm a resident of West Bend. I am here to update the public on the 5th through 8th grade Social Studies Resources review and to recap the Curriculum Committee meeting of March 1st, where the public feedback was discussed. First, Superintendent Wimmer supported the administration's push to approve the defective McGraw-Hill vendor by saying, "No book is perfect." That was quite the understatement. Our team did not find just a couple of issues with McGraw-Hill. Carol Hager alone found an alphabet's worth of topics of misinformation and a lack of substance in addition to misspellings and typos. That was only the tip of the iceberg of the problems our team uncovered, and I'm sure we could find. and I'm sure we could find many more issues if we were given more time to thoroughly review the resource. Second, Dr. Reese gave two reasons why they were pushing for McGraw-Hill. One is because the teachers can create, customize their own curriculum the way they want, and the other is because it offers the three reading levels needed for what I believe is part of the grading for learning that the school district adopted in 2020. If the teachers can customize, how can the public review it? We won't know what the students are getting until after the resource is approved. If the resource is so horrible that it needs to be rewritten, why pay for it? Why not continue using the resources we already have and save the district tens of thousands of dollars? Regarding "no book being perfect," our review team offered a couple of different publishers that we know provide truth-and-fact-based balanced education with substance. Dr. Reese says in following policy, "Once the request for proposal is closed, we are not able to open it up to other vendors. Then either change the policy or scrap the vendors and start the process over." Dr. Reese said she spent time looking into core knowledge resource after we offered it as an alternative, and she found it to be a set of must-dos and suggestions with limited resources or tools included and only one reading level. Nonetheless, if she's willing to have teachers create their own lessons with the costly and deficient McGraw-Hill, why not do it with the free and fact-based core knowledge resource? We have a duty to educate our students properly above anything else. Yet, our school district was ranked by DPI as ninth out of 10 academically in our 10-team conference. Wisconsin overall was one of nine states to earn an F on the Thomas B. Fordham Institute's latest report card on history and civic standards in U.S. schools. Our school district ranking at the bottom in a state that earned an F is not something to dismiss. Regarding McGraw-Hill, even Tony Schmidt and Erin Dove admitted they were overwhelmed with all the problems we uncovered, and consequently, a lot of time will be spent determining what needs to be eliminated or supplemented in order for the content to be accurate. Paul Fisher suggested at Saturday's Voters Forum that our teachers could do a better job teaching if they didn't have to keep learning new curriculum. Scrap McGraw-Hill before you waste any more time or money and end up dumbing our students down to placing 10th out of 10 school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron Merkel is next, and Ms. Melanie Ergot is on deck. Mr. Merkel, welcome. I've got your address here, and it says you're a student in the district. Is that correct?
Yep.
Great.
All right. Good evening. I'm pleased to announce that the heat in the high school seems to have stayed at a normal temperature lately that I'm aware of, and so I thank you. I'm here to talk about building planning, which I touched on two meetings ago or so, and I only had about 30 seconds to add in the 2019 findings, which is why I wanted to fully elaborate on it all tonight. Located in the 29-page slideshow are different suggestions in what should be funded to improve the district. Towards the end of the findings portion of the presentation are four different objects, or different options, and I'll read them aloud now. So, and option one. Option one: Do nothing. The advantage: No cost. Disadvantages: No-cost options always have a cost. 1.5 million a year will be poured into obsolete buildings and should be increased to $3 million a year for many years to come. Option two: Retain all buildings and make all necessary capital improvements at existing sites. Advantages: Addresses immediate capital improvements needs, no school reassignment disruption. Disadvantages: Does not address safety and other inherent issues at Jackson. Overall inventory continues to age. Capital funding models are inadequate and maintain these buildings, or inadequate maintaining these buildings. Substantial investment in capital improvements remains necessary. Option three: Replace Jackson at the recently proposed new site. Advantages: Eliminates $7.5 million of necessary capital improvements at the current Jackson School. Creates a new school at Jackson that is optimally suitable for today's education and enrollment needs. Energy and operational costs are reduced, no redistricting, and minimal construction disruption. Disadvantages: Construction expense only addresses Jackson and no reduction in admin or operating costs. Investors are hard to come by resources at the most remote location in the district. Now, option four. Construct one new school with a 783-student capacity at a southside location and expand Green Tree. Include maintenance and district offices at the new campus. Close within Cell, Jackson School, Jackson Land, Decora, Fair Park, district offices, and Ralph's in Maintenance. Redistribute students accordingly. Advantages: Three of the worst buildings out of the inventory along with maintenance and district offices negates $22.5 million of capital improvement needs at Jackson, Decora, Fair Park, Maintenance, and Ralph's in district offices over 10 years. Reduces staffing needs, improves overall inventory age, 21st-century learning environment, attracted to families and staff, conducive to enrollment fluctuations, district offices and maintenance, and more efficient operations and supervision. Now, the disadvantages are potential increased busing expense, school assignment disruption, and initial investment. Now, I know that's a lot that I just read to you, but you can find that all on the district's website. But I think this is, I know the statistics are all outdated, but I think this is something that needs to be looked into more, especially when we have declining enrollment. Jackson Elementary School building is falling apart, and in most recent years, parents have decided to homeschool or put their children into private schools. I think we need more attractive and well-run facilities, and it's something to contemplate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And our last planned speaker is Ms. Melanie Ergot. List you as a taxpayer. I have your address on the card.
Yes.
Welcome, and the next three minutes are yours.
All right. So I just wanted to comment on the last board meeting. In light of the recent situations where one student, this was also after, received a concussion and another was repeatedly assaulted with a weapon by another student on the bus, I wanted to address the behavioral problems at the district. Bullying and disruptive behavior seems to be a constant issue that is not being dealt with. Parents and social media groups are consistently chiming in with stories of incessant bullying escalating to the point of even having to remove their children from the district to find relief as their concerns are not being taken seriously by administration. Why should innocent children be forced to live in fear of being injured or hurt at school or on the bus? There needs to be significant consequences for the bad behavior, and clearly, whatever policies that are in place are not working or being followed. We know that hurting people hurt people. However, kids still need consequences. If adults behave like this, they would be arrested, and we're teaching kids that the way that they are treating people is okay, and that will not serve them well in the long run. Some will argue that the social and emotional learning or second step helps with bullying. Does it? It doesn't look like it is working. Maybe a Band-Aid at best. Cell is teaching kids to manage symptoms of trauma rather than getting to the root of it. The district needs to get back in its lane, education. With math and literacy goals of 40%, we're failing our children. Let's put the focus back on reading, writing, and arithmetic. Perhaps there is a better use of these Cell funds with an already projected deficit of nearly $2.4 million in the next year's budget. This includes over $4 million of funds from one-time S.R. grants. Without these grants, the deficit would be over $6 million. This is not sustainable. The district continues to raise taxes and spending despite declining enrollment. Parents are pulling their kids out because their concerns are not being heard. More money is not the answer when the district is not properly managing what they have. Drastic changes need to be made to operate within our means. With talk of a referendum to address a new Jackson Elementary building and other maintenance challenges, perhaps now is a good time to revisit the work done by the private task force. And thank you, Cameron. I didn't know you were even speaking on that, but he just went over that. They offered excellent solutions that would not involve a referendum and placing an additional financial burden on the taxpayers. Inflation has affected families all over the district, most of which did not receive raises, and everyone has had to adjust their spending. Why should the district get a repass? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. That concludes our public participation portion. Thank you for those who came to speak. We'll move on then to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we've got minutes of the February 21 and March 3 regular board meeting and executive session. Disbursements posted to March 7, 2022. No ratification of contracts or resignations, but one retirement. With that, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Nancy. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Zweigert votes yes. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yeah.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
And Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That motion carries. So we are on to reports, and we will start with the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
I had my list of athletic accomplishments. Some of the students spoke to those. And I just want to make sure. We heard from our student reporters, and we heard certainly from the coaches. I just want to echo Coach Soxey's thank you when he thanked all the coaches, the assistants, many volunteers, and the families, that the work that goes into supporting our athletes. And thank you to all of our winter athletes for representing West Bend. Out of my list of highlights, I covered all of them with the exception of, I'm not sure I caught, the East bowling team. So just shout out the West and East bowling teams competed at state this past weekend as individuals from West. It was Haley Cobral, Josh Renner, Jacob Becker. And for East, which that's one I thought I didn't hear, Haley Kahler, Zach Zoromsky, and Nick Witty also competed. So I just wanted to make sure I rounded out those recognitions with that. One of the follow-up items I had, certainly we heard at our last board meeting, some significant concerns about some individual student incidences, some generalized behavior, certainly about the buses as well. After hearing those concerns, we started, we had started already a formal investigation. The public will have seen a closed meeting by the board anytime we're dealing in the nature of those things, and we've provided as much communication as we feel comfortable given the nature of individual students that were involved in specific incidences. I've sent a couple of community pieces to our families and posted them for the community. We've sent some individual follow-ups to both Badger and Silverbrook. And one of the things that we had crafted as part of that was really sharing our expectations for our students' experience. And a foundational piece is safety. We don't take the trust that our families place in us lightly, not just for the educational piece, but the foundational pieces of keeping their children safe and learning, and it's a place that they can do so. When, when those expectations aren't met at the school level, I would urge, as, as we have, is reach out. If you reach out to me, I'll either connect you with the right person or I'll help you navigate that concern. None of us want to see that experience for our kids, for our families, for our staff, and certainly, we don't want it representing who we are as West Bend. So it's not something that we, we take lightly. I'll, I'll just pause, again, limited in what I can or can't discuss. I just wanted to make sure and honor publicly that there was significant follow-up regarding that and what we heard as, as directed and in play. Any specifics around that?
Can you speak to what we've seen in the last two weeks with the staff ridership on the buses, please?
Sure, I, I have that to expand on. We had already been talking about and had a skeleton of that in play. We identified three specific routes. We communicated directly with our families as well as those schools. We've expanded that just because we, we did a call for riders. We have eight total routes that we're riding consistently. We are also looking at all the discipline referrals. Anything that rises to a certain level, we'll place a rider on. There was a lot of discussion around, who are the riders? We made sure to identify that they are adult riders. We're not hiring high school students as bus monitors, anything like that. They're adult staff members, also not simply volunteers. There was also a question around, are they or aren't they administrators? And I put out something in our, in our follow-up communication. Certainly, as schedules allow, there's 11 administrators. There's aides, teachers, the school liaison officers. All support riding. Also wanted to make sure people didn't want this falling to the backs of people with an existing position. It was an all-call that we made. For anyone, if it's in addition to their already consumed role, that kind of thing, they're compensated for that additional time, all with the exception of any administrator. That's just kind of those duties as assigned piece. So we, we do have administrators riding buses, and they ride anywhere from two to five days a week. It's really dependent on the week, their schedule, they certainly. And we also keep an administrator on-site should they need to attend to anything occurring at that site. Certainly, with the adult presence, any kind of incidence has, has really diminished. I think we had three bus referrals in the entire system last week. Certainly, it's, it's helped that families are having conversations at home about this, reinforcing their expectations. So we appreciate that partnership. And, and certainly, there have been having administrative meetings with bus routes around those expectations. So again, that, that partnership is appreciated. We'll continue to look at that. We do a post-adult rider survey, but I didn't have that data to synthesize for this, but I'll make sure and include that in a follow-up around exactly what we're seeing. And then, our Assistant Superintendent Andy Sarno works directly with the administrators as that liaison to go right-way so that we're working consistently with them as a transportation partner and provider, and that the drivers themselves are, are also kind of being brought into the loop. And they certainly engage with the riders and supervisors as well. So that, that would be my plans kind of for follow-up is to keep you apprised of the situation, the data that's coming from that with that post- rider checklist, and just monitoring at that time. Anything further around bus?
What's the timeframe for the adult riders? Is there a sunset target on that?
Yeah, two, two pieces. We talked about the, the month of March for those pieces, but then doing, again, assuming that data doesn't yield us needing to place riders in certain spots, which we are committed to doing. But then, we also said we would take some of those and just do sporadic, just hopping on routes. We might use some of that staff to review the bus video footage just consistently and, and provide that just ongoing. So it, it wouldn't sunset in entirety. We'd continue to keep a heightened monitoring.
Thank you.
Ms. Wimmer?
Yes.
Honey?
I can hear you.
Could you speak to the part about giving permission to bus drivers to pull over and wait for everyone to be seated in the event that students are choosing to stand up on the bus when they're not supposed to? Even if it means that the students will be a few minutes late to their destination, I hope that parents will be understanding that we are more concerned about proper behavior on the bus than getting to wherever they're supposed to be on time.
I, I think you, you said that pretty well as a statement. That is one piece. We talked about the expectation to remain seated. Even if it's not part of a behavior disruption, it's clouding a driver's view of what's happening on a bus, certainly. So we did talk about that as an expectation and making sure drivers understood that. They also reinforced their ability to call into the station and circle back to a campus. If you needed an administrator to board that bus, If you needed an administrator to board that bus, either at the school or at our central office, we are there to support you in, in taking care of, in that moment, what needs to be done. So thank you for that reminder.
Can you tell us if any, I don't know, like, does a bus driver need to report that if they had to pull over? Is that something?
That would be part of their report.
So have, has any of that happened this week that you don't, or last week? Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that. It could be part of the one of the write-ups, and I don't have that information.
Sure. So I guess I just wanted everyone to know that, like, that is tracked, obviously.
It is.
So, you know, if students are late and parents are wondering why, for everyone watching at home, don't assume it was bad weather or potentially a, a bus driver who couldn't find his way. Assume it might be bad behavior by one of your own children.
It, it certainly could be, but I think the other piece too is make sure you're downloading that app so that you're alerted. They're, they're loading that, that routing software where you can get that update. You can track your individual child's bus, so you'll know if it's delayed, because there is always that point of worry. You know, when you expect a child home at a certain time and, and that has not hit that mark, there's, there's that moment of, of worry about your own child. So we'll make sure and reinforce that in our communications on Wednesday as well. What I'll do is, we have a Wednesday newsletter going out. I'll pick up kind of this summary, and I'll grab that data for this week, so people can be aware, and we've got that represented accurately. We'll make sure and send it out to all families right away on Wednesday. Yep. Nothing more on that topic. I do have a, a couple others. Just looking at, we've talked about, Andy Sarno spoke last time at the, kind of that financial picture in the future. Certainly, he's been doing work individually in the community. But he and Nancy Kunkler, who handle communications, have updated our website. We'll be drawing everyone's attention to that on Wednesdays. Take a look at the district website under the financial part. They really tried to put some of that financial 101 that he was talking about at the last meeting. He'll take the next meeting and kind of walk us through and share and, and really gather some questions. So if community members can take a look at that information, we'll also highlight it on Wednesday. If you have any lingering questions or have some feedback for us on that, we would love to hear it. You can either send it to me or Andy Sarno directly. So we'll make sure and highlight that on Wednesday as well. One, another piece that we added, we were able to put it in that communication in a timely manner around families and reporting, but we'll make sure that it hits our district newsletter, as well as social media, that we get some posters on buses and schools, et cetera. But it was the addition of a tip line. So it's a new reporting system called Speak Up for Safety, in which students could email, students, family members, and anyone really, could email speakup@wbsd-schools.org, or they could text or call 262-357-3530 to share concerns about school safety, bus safety, well-being of themselves, others, et cetera. So it's, it's again, Speak Up for Safety. We evaluate and report. It's, it's evaluated 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, so that students, families, et cetera, have, have access to reporting. And then it's monitored and routed if there's any kind of emergency situation. And that would be a tip line in addition to West Bend. Police certainly have tip lines as well that are, that are monitored, but just an additional avenue. So we'll make sure and promote that. Just to highlight, we've got some Battle of the Books winners. In the past, we've had Battle of the Books teams here to be recognized by the board, and I'm sure we'll have another soon, because our sixth grade team placed first in the state out of 213 teams. Just a congratulations to Emery Kleis, Emmeline, and Lana Novak, and Isaac Jerick. The Battle of the Books is sponsored by the Wisconsin Educational Media and Technology Association, and it's a great way for them to promote a love of reading and show off their knowledge. So congratulations to that team. Thank you for their representation. And again, congrats on a first-place finish for that. I'm sure we'll, we'll get them in in the future to recognize them. Summer School, just a reminder that Summer School registration is open today. There's lots of choices for students, whether it's needing some support, or there's some enrichment opportunities. And there's also a lot of virtual options. So again, that's for grades eight through 12 open today. Grades 4K through 7 opens next Monday. Just visit our website so that you can get those details. Check out the new classes. We, we always do some surveying of families and students who participated in the last year as we come into the new season. There's Jump Start events, there's music camps, and more. So it's again free to any student who lives in the school district attendance area. Thank you to Erin Faust and her team. They've been presenting before, and you formally approved that program. That first session begins on June 13th. So check out our website, or feel free to connect directly with Erin Faust, that program coordinator. A congratulations to Abby Padilla, the Director of Nutrition. She was presented a Breakfast Hero Award from Wisconsin's Department of Public Instruction, and the School Nutrition Association of Wisconsin, as well as the No Kid Hungry Wisconsin, and the Hunger Task Force during National School Breakfast Week, which is this week. So Abby accepted that. On behalf of everyone on the nutrition team, thank you for their work. It was given to the whole department to honor their hard work, really specifically calling out their work since the pandemic began, and what they've managed for in-person, as well as those participating in distance learning, supply chain issues, all of that. So again, congratulations to Abby and the nutrition staff, not just for earning that award, but in honor and recognition of School Breakfast Week. So we'd like to thank them for their efforts. Couple of other thank-yous. Just a thank you to the West Bend Columns Organization and the Oscar and Augusta Schlegel Foundation. They sponsored a concert with the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra last week with every fourth and fifth grader in all schools, public, private, parochial, everyone welcome to the Silver Linings Arts Center. Thank you to Board Member Joel Ongert. He organized all the volunteers as part of his work with Columns. But that is made by the generous donation of the Oscar and Augusta Schlegel Foundation, and Columns works to administer and oversee that work. So I had the opportunity to be an usher at the program and participate, and it was amazing. I think the kids spoke to that, and it's a good thing they went home to study. Many of our juniors are taking the ACT tomorrow in our high schools. In Wisconsin, just a reminder that all juniors take the ACT. It's part of their state assessment, and it's provided at no cost. We had talked before, kind of probably when we all took it, it was at a random high school in the state that you signed up. Kids are able to participate right in their home high school, which I'm sure supports any kind of test anxiety they might have with familiar faces and on-campus, and also at no cost. And you may remember that Zach Kainings took it last fall and earned a perfect score of 36. So, hey juniors, that's where the bar's set. So good luck tomorrow. And again, just do your best. Also a reminder that Friday, March 11th is, while it's a day off for all students, they probably gloat because it's not for staff. Our staff will be working in collaboration with colleagues, whether it's school or department goals, hosting conferences with families, others are, are working on different assessments and instructional practices. We've been making sure to highlight those in our district news, alerting them and taking the, the wonder away of what, what exactly are they doing on those days off? So we've been including those grids, so look for that again in this Wednesday's newsletter. So with that, I don't have anything further.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, thank you for the report. We'll move to the Curriculum Committee report, and Erin Dove.
Okay, thank you. The Curriculum Committee met last Tuesday morning, March 1st, and we had six items for discussion on our agenda. The first item was seventh through 12th grade health course review and revision. And that was just a high-level update of kind of what the timing will look like for reviewing that course, and there'll be more information coming forth. The second item was something similar. It's the Human Growth and Development Review Process. So again, a timeline, who's all involved in that, some dates, agenda kind of things. And I think we're gonna see that tonight on the agenda, just a similar update to what we saw at Curriculum. The third item was the Start College Now and Early College Credit Timeline. And that was just letting us know that those classes, those to be requested by students were due on March 1st. So we will see that coming in front of the full board. Curriculum won't see it just because of the timing of it. So we'll see that at a future board meeting coming shortly. The fourth item is WBVA Program Discussion. So Erin Faust just gave an update on what that looks like for this next year, dates on when families are learning about it, kind of what Semester Two enrollment looked like for this year, and what is looking like going forward. Fifth item is fifth through eighth grade social studies feedback review. Tawny and I spoke even more about that at that meeting. We asked some more questions of the administration. I think we're gonna get kind of a high-level update today, as that is still sitting in, in committee. And finally, the last item is a Family and Consumer Science Culinary Curriculum Resource Update. That's on the agenda today. That is, it's a national certified curriculum, so we just pushed that forward right to action today. Any questions?
Great, any questions for Erin? Thank you, Erin. And then the Policy Committee report, Mr. Ongert.
Yep, Policy Committee met the last time on February 11th, and that was a, quite a marathon meeting. But if anybody, any fellow board members want to go back and review that meeting, or members of the community, those meetings are always posted, the videos of those meetings. But tonight, we will have some second readings and third readings of the work from that committee, some removals of policies, some combining policies into one sort of thing. So we'll take those up in action here in just a minute.
Right, any questions for Joel? All right, thank you. We'll move then to the action items on our agenda. And the first is early reading empowerment micro credential. And Mr. Lenny Hansen is gonna kick that off for us. Good evening, Mr. Hansen.
Good evening. So at our last meeting, we spent some time, Dr. Reese and I, going through this proposal for micro credential that would create a pathway for our elementary teachers, as well as our elementary special education teachers, to gain some really valuable training that has a lot of research behind it and a lot of evidence of its success, both in individual and small group work. This would allow those staff members to then bring those skills to their classrooms on a regular basis, and we cited some research about the type of impact that can have. Since the proposal a couple of weeks ago, the only possible change in this is I did have a meeting with Concordia, who was the partner university we were looking at, working with on this. We may, on this particular micro credential, end up operating this one in-house, just the way that we're looking at kind of a two-stage rollout, where the first semester is the coursework, but the second semester is kind of more one-on-one, high-intensity coaching. And that's the normal model for ERE and reading recovery training. It may work better for us to facilitate that versus using Concordia. It might just be more effective use of the dollars. And Concordia was agreeable when we kind of talked about how we were looking at doing that. So that's the only change from the initial presentation that I would say is possible. But otherwise, we answered questions about it last time. If the board were to approve this tonight, you know, that would allow us to move forward with conversations very in-depth with the trainers that we're very fortunate to have within the system around planning, so that we could target a September launch. So any further questions from anybody before hopefully we can bring it forth for a vote?
So Lenny, if we switch to delivering this in-house, is it still using Concordia's content?
So the content is ours, actually.
Is it?
So it's self-created. So using Concordia was a simpler way to kind of handle logistics of tuition and pieces like that, and some of the platform pieces, but we can use Canvas as well, our internal system, for rolling it out that way. The only downside not using Concordia, or the, the significant one, is if someone wants to put on the resume that they're an adjunct professor for Concordia, they can't do that in this case. We have several other opportunities in the works that will create that opportunity for people. But we also think this, just in terms of the labor required of the trainers, this is a lot heavier labor than your typical micro credential course. Doing it internally allows us to funnel the tuition dollars a little bit more directly to those trainers, rather than maybe a cut going to a university when it's such an intense effort by them, and we really want to recognize and support the, the work that those trainers are doing. So Concordia kind of understood how this was a little bit different from other, some of our other offerings we're developing with them.
So even if we would've stuck with the Concordia approach, the delivery would've been the same resources?
Delivery would've been the same resources.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're self-creating a lot of our micro credential courses, because we know that's gonna be most applicable, you know, so the work, the, the way we deliver certain programs, which, which resources we have available in our building, we just felt that was more effective. So, for example, Mr. Harder, our Technology Director, and Curtis Markwart, one of our instructional coaches, kind of developed a homegrown technology micro credential, and that was built by them to really target, you know, what technology resources we encourage and nurture here in the system. And that's a, a lot more beneficial than just our, kind of a random, learn some technology...
Here's Zoom, here's WebEx, whatever.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of the same approach.
Not really a question, but more just a comment. I was highly in favor of this last time, having, you know, talked about the fact that my children were involved in reading recovery and how beneficial it was to them. And I love the idea that we'll have more teachers able to kind of help in that process and catch, catch students who are struggling much earlier, you know, so that we can hopefully correct and move them along quicker, so it's not such a struggle for them. So I highly, I'm in total favor of this. I like the fact that we're doing it in-house, and I can't wait to hear you tell us how many people actually go through. So please make sure you come back and give us that information, because I think that's critical. And I also think it's a great thing to announce to other teachers as well, as I'm sure it will be a good recruitment tool for you as well, to let teachers know, like, hey, if you're coming in, you can learn this program through us as well. So I'm highly in favor, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll motion to approve offering the early reading empowerment micro credential opportunity for certified staff.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ERE micro credential opportunity for certified staff as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion. Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Justman?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. That motion carries. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, and we're on to policies, we, as Mr. Ongert had talked about. So we've got second reading of certain policies, and that'll be followed by the third reading of other policies. So I'm gonna turn this over, I believe, to Superintendent Wimmer to kick this off.
I know, I had an arm wrestled away from Mr. Ongert, who's the, the head of that committee. Just a reminder, at the very bottom, I, I added, Policy 151 guides us in how we do policy. Just a reminder, on a second reading, if we have unanimous approval on the second reading, which is tonight for, for some of these, they were previously presented on February 21st. Tonight would be that second reading for them. Unanimous approval, we could adopt new. There's three that were new language, 672 around purchasing, 672.51 suspension and disbarment, and 831, remember, it was formerly 734. We just updated all that language around restrictions on tobacco. Those would be the three that we could consider if the board voted unanimously for those at the second reading. There's also a chunk of policies that could be deleted after consideration at two board meetings and approved by the majority vote of those present. Again, we looked at some of those pieces, and I put reference in there. We certainly reviewed those last time. It's not that all those policies are going away, it's that they're being folded in updated language, updated numbers, or concepts going in another place. So any of us from Policy Committee or myself are happy to field any questions. I made sure to note with the potential for action on these, that it was in the action section, should the board like to. Again, that would, we would need a motion a second and unanimous for those for approval. And then we could also, if we had that unanimous, remove the ones noted as well. So you could entertain a motion for approval and removal as presented, and then go forward from there. So are there any questions from any other board members? I know we've spent a lot of time on the 600 and 700 series, talking about those prior to going into committee on them as well. So any questions at this time?
Any questions?
I'll just, I'll just make a comment for the, for action item B tonight, for approval, 672, 672.51, and 831. We can approve those with unanimous vote. If we don't get a unanimous vote, I would suggest that we do not have action on the removal of the list below. Because if we don't have a unanimous vote on, let's say, the tobacco nicotine policy, but then we remove the tobacco nicotine, well, then we don't have a tobacco nicotine policy for the next two weeks.
We would have a gap.
You get the, you get the point.
That's why we package them as kind of one. If you, if you so move, we would take them as approval and removal, all in that one motion.
Certainly not trying to suggest that we, we need to vote yes on these. If you want more time to come back, then we can certainly, you know, vote the way you want. But my strong suggestion would be if the first three do not pass tonight and move on to a third reading, then we don't even take any action on the removal. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Doesn't it make sense? Maybe we can divide this and start with the approval? We could do that? And then if that passes unanimously, then we can discuss the removal?
I think that's a good idea.
All right.
So I will move to, I will move for approval of Policy 672, which is purchasing.
Do you want to do all three at once, the three policies? Or do you want to do them individually?
We should do them individually.
Do them individually? All right.
Just in case?
Just in case.
All right, very good.
So I, I will move to approve the revised Policy 672 purchasing.
I will second that. Motion to approve the revisions to Policy 672 purchasing. Additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Swigert's vote, yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
That, that approval is unanimous, and so that will take effect.
I will move to approve revisions to Policy 672.51, which is suspension and debarment of vendors and contractors.
Second.
Motion and second to approve revisions to Policy 672.51, suspension and debarment of vendors and contractors. Final discussion?
Again, this was several different 672 policies that are kind of being revised and put together into one, basically.
All right, I will call the motion, starting with Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
That also passes unanimously and will take effect.
I will move to approve new board policy 831, restrictions on tobacco, nicotine, and vapor products.
I'll second.
And the reason I say new on that one is because technically, it was Policy 734. It was, it was misnumbered. And so I say new because 831 is a policy that we have not had. The policy itself, we have always had a tobacco policy. That policy was outdated.
The policy itself, we have always had a tobacco policy, that policy was outdated, we, we, I can't remember the exact changes we made, but it, we updated it to include things like vapes and, and whatever, but, so technically, 831 is a new policy, although the contents of the policy is certainly not new.
Right, our, our stance is still a no, we just made sure to call out students, staff, visitors, kind of each venue, and the venue extends beyond our grounds if we're engaged in an off-campus activity, but it's school-sponsored, what the expectation was.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of new policy 831, restrictions on tobacco, nicotine, and vapor products. Additional discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion. Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman? Ms. Dove? Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, and that will take effect.
Now I will move to approve removal of board policy 645, 672.1, 672.2, 672.5, 731.3, 733, and 734.
I'll second.
So as you can see on our agenda tonight, and this is for public view on, on board docs, I didn't bother to read what the titles of all of these are, but a lot of them, like all the 672s that I mentioned, are local purchasing, bidding procedures, purchasing emergencies, which we just updated a second ago in the 672 purchasing that we just approved. And I spoke about the tobacco, that was 734, now that we have 831, we don't need 734 anymore. Looks like one of these is employee and visitor identification badges, that's covered in our employee handbooks. I can't remember the energy management conservation. Superintendent, can you remind me on that one?
That one's actually covered in the job description and duties expected by our director.
So that's basically the gist of the removals of those. I do have a comment on that one, last one, 733, because it is an important conversation topic. We spend 1.3 million on gas, electric, heat, cooling, all those expenses. We have 1.1 million square feet, foot under all the schools and building, support buildings. It's under the job responsibility of our director, Dave Ross. I would say we've had energy companies look at that spend. There's good and bad news about it. The good news is, if you're looking at total square footage and how much you're spending, we're one of the lower school districts in utility spends per square feet. So Dave Ross and, they're working with a lot of old equipment, they have everything dialed in, not all the time, that's why Cameron, it's good to point out things in the high school, and we'll try to get on those and address it, but the utility spend is one of the lowest school districts in the area. I would say there's some lighting improvements to be made, which is identified, and we'll talk about those on facilities discussions, because we can save more money there. So good and bad news regarding budgets, but I agree that it's under the job description of Dave Ross and the utility crew there that he has watching that, so those are just my extra comments on that one.
Thank you, Kurt. Other comments or questions? All right, since there's a motion and a second, this is for removal of Policy 645, 672.1, 672.2, 672.5, 731.3, 733, and 734. With that, I will call the motion. And Mr. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
All right. That removal takes effect. So those are the items under, I believe it was the second reading, correct? And so the next item on our agenda are the third reading items. Third reading of policies.
Correct, and just a reminder then, new policy, policy considerations, after it's been considered at three board meetings, which is the third reading of these policies and approved by majority of the entire board, so we don't need that unanimous piece for those, so just making sure you're aware of that. So again, it's a clear action item tonight regarding this. This is the third reading. You'll recall that we had to dig into a lot of misnumbering in the 600 series, a lot of those, so it was really clean to update all the numbers, we didn't want anyone getting confused, so you can see a lot of approvals and a lot of removals, and again, in per ends noting kind of the whys behind those. Again, this is third reading, nothing has changed since we, we had our last discussion.
I would suggest, just based on the number of policies that we have in front of us tonight, if there is a policy that a board member would like to pull out from the motion I'm about to make, feel free to put a second motion on the table and do that. In my opinion, in the time spent with the Policy Committee, our first reading, our second reading, and now our third, none of these policies are controversial in any way, none of them are major, major changes. It's a, like the superintendent said, it was a lot of just updating language, making them current, updating numbering, things like that. And so I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve these as a slate, but again, if, if a board member would like to pull one out separately, then make a secondary motion, and we can certainly do that. Does that make sense, Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Nope, that's fine. And that's motion?
So I will move to approve. Should I list all the numbers of these?
You can, certainly. You'd move to approve, or you can say, move to approve policies as stated, as well as the corresponding removal as stated, or you can certainly read them in.
I will move to approve the policies as stated.
I will, I will second.
The whole, the whole slate of them that you see in front of you is my motion, is the.
And then we'll do the removal separately.
All right. So a motion for approval and a second. Any additional discussion?
Just one comment. I know that the Policy Committee spent a lot of time going over these and looking at different resources, so I wanted to just acknowledge that time and energy spent by the group, as well as Superintendent, and I know that you've also gone through this with WASBEE, correct? Do I have my acronym correct? Thank you.
In fact, we, we subscribe to the WASBEE policy guide, and we have for a number of years now, and so a lot of these policies have language that is used around the state, and then what, what's great about WASBEE is that they list the state statutes that a lot of these policies fall under. And so these are not necessarily handwritten by our district. The Policy Committee does make revisions to some of the suggested policy, and, and some of them are policies maybe brought in from other school districts. But Nancy, you're absolutely correct, there's.
So part of that subscription, they have a full legal team, they're certainly vetted in, you know, school law, all of those complexities and, and pieces. And then we work to make sure that we're using that, that we have the opportunity to localize it, because that's something we, we have complete local control over, is our policy language. And we also kind of tried to make sure that it, it was intended for not only guiding our work as a district, but we're aware that it's, it's public facing, and to make sure it was understood by our community, or they would at least know, you know, where to direct questions or follow up in those pieces. So it's certainly a lot, but we, we tried to kind of attend to all those pieces.
So yeah, my comment was really just to say, I know that there's been a lot of time and energy put into this, and by all parties, you know, committee as well as Superintendent, and obviously, thank you to the work of WASBEE as well for providing us the legal information. So congratulations, thank you for all your hard work, and thanks for not making me do all that.
Mostly the administration and the committee, but thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Did we get any questions from the community? I know we, now this, this is being the third reading. Did we get any questions from the community, and if so, have all of them been answered?
Yep, we had one question, I spoke about it at our second reading, which was in 187, I brought that back, and it was regarding addition of residential addresses in the minutes. We, at our last discussion, considered that nonsubstantial, that we would be ready to bring it back for a third reading, and remove that from minutes going forward as part of this work. That was the only piece heard from and then attended to after our second reading.
Okay, thank you, and just a comment, reading through all these, which takes a lot of time, but a lot of them are just reasonable updates and changes, as, as Nancy said, and thank you to the committee for going through all of these and keeping us current.
All right. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor for.
Who was the second on the floor?
Me.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and second for approval of the policies as presented. I'll call the motion. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Ms. Dove? Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
All right, the, those policies are now officially approved.
I will move to approve removal of the policies listed as presented.
Second.
Motion and second for removal of the policies as presented. Any additional discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none, I will call the motion. Swigert votes yes. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Those policies are approved for removal. All right.
Thank you all on those.
Thank you for your.
Good chunk of policies that have been updated tonight, so that's great.
All right. We are now on to our discussion items, and the first item is the district calendar for 2022 through 2024. Superintendent Wimmer?
Thank you. Since our last discussion of this, we, we talked about kind of looking at two years, the COVID disruption, all those different things, thinking about calendars, and really doing some comprehensive work. We solicited input from all staff, we have a representative committee kind of waiting in the wings, and we also reviewed our engagement survey data from all of our staff, because some of the, the components of calendar came up in that. So one of the pieces I'd like to bring forward and, and really discuss and, and communicate with our families sooner rather than later is the start date of our calendars, which is listed for the next two years. I also have a visual, it's posted online. Again, it's not an approved calendar, we need to discuss, but I also have that as a handout for you, so you could kind of look back and forth. So we talked a lot about the start date, and when that occurs. In that first year of that calendar, it does start on a Thursday, we talked about orientation activities, such as a freshman orientation occurring that Wednesday before, things like open house, all of those, those dates prior. We talked about, yep, it seems like a short week, but sometimes that in and out setting of expectations and then coming back and, and hitting learning was okay. Where we stray after that is listening to the feedback around starting school clearly after Labor Day, starting on a Friday did not make sense, so we'd like to look at that. Is there any concerns about that start date? Again, by law, we can't start until September 1, that September 1 falls at just such an odd time. I have no reason to go for some kind of exception with the state to start our, our school year any earlier than that. Great, I know that was a, a big discussion point last time, was that, you know, those couple days, and when did it matter, when didn't it? Another piece that families are, are really interested in are those breaks, so I'd like to go through theirs. We had some preliminary discussion around and, and really looked at staff, staff input around the November and winter breaks. Looking at November, we've always taken that Wednesday off. We've put in the last two years, a Monday return for staff and students then returning the following day. What we, we really liked about that is having at least one planning day, whether it's kind of workday, planning day, professional learning day, a month for our staff. It, it makes the most natural fit for our families to attach it to a break, there's oftentimes travel associated with seeing family, we want to do the least amount of disruption in that. So we had talked about that, again, and that following, that practice for both Novembers. Any concern about those pieces? One of the things we heard from staff was those were valuable days in both the November and December, but not looking at it at every single break, they didn't want it to unnaturally extend the, the school year calendar for students or for themselves either, just where it made sense for families. Also, you know, thankfully, COVID, we, we don't need to deal with that anymore, but you're, you're naturally in, in those times where families are traveling, they might be with loved ones and colds, the extra day of recovery sometimes as well for them if needed. But the same would hold true for that winter break. Please note where it starts, Friday, December 23rd in the 22 calendar, again, returning students, that staff returning on Monday, giving them that, that January day, that's coming right into that semester piece. Looking at that, and, and then looking at that following year where Friday, we'd have school Friday, December 22nd, and then start that break, so I didn't want everyone to panic saying, oh, we're, we're off the December 25th through, through January 2nd for students, and think, what? That it was short, it's just that, to go through school through the 22nd would be part of our past practice. So in looking at that, again, returning our staff a day earlier than our students, an extension of time with family, travel, et cetera, and then not doing that to any other break.
Can I just interrupt you quick? So if we're just looking at January 2023, the Monday, the 2nd is off for everybody, and then Tuesday, the 3rd is a staff-only day? No.
Are you looking at January?
2023.
So we'd be looking at kids returning on the 3rd, staff returning on the 2nd.
Okay.
So they're off through January 2nd?
Okay.
And the staff would come back. So I'm just kind of paying attention to the, the student part of it, so we can get this in front of families for feedback before you do your formal vote.
Thank you.
Because I'd want to communicate that in our Wednesday district news around this discussion, but it helps us with the, some guide stones. We need to lay in, obviously, roughly four or five other professional days. We had previously discussed really tailoring those to a Monday or Friday, that's what we would use committee input for. Again, we've received feedback from all staff on that, but those days need to be well-placed to align with whether it's assessment results coming back in, giving of semester grades, et cetera, that's kind of the piece. But these are really big cornerstones of a calendar, kind, once we lay in those, you have very limited wiggle room, so it's, it's just those pieces. That takes care of those breaks. One of the discussions that we had last time in our preliminary discussion was, it was expressed by one of our board members to be in full observance of MLK for all, for students and staff, I've noted both of those days. I think in the past, they were observed for students, and it was a day of work for staff, so we did have that discussion at our last one. This calendar would represent that. Is there any further discussion from the board on, on that? Right now, I would, I would go ahead and, and keep that in based on our previous discussion.
Great, I would continue that piece. We've also historically utilized Presidents' Day, some of our families have that off, so it's again, that natural fit, we would keep that off for students only and have a day of service for our, our staff in those February dates falling on the 20th or 19th. Spring break is very consistent, it's always the last week in March. In this first, you'll see in 2023, it falls outside of Good Friday and Easter, so it creates that unusual break. However, everyone in the conference lines up to that, athletic events, et cetera, our families utilize that for travel, and it's been really consistent, so many just kind of know that piece, I wouldn't want to break from that historical practice there. And then you'll see in the following year, it folds back in and Easter falls within that break. I would recommend that we extend that, that Monday of return for, for our students, so that again, that family piece, we can return as staff, use that as a staff day that Monday, but again, extend that break on April 1st in 2024 for students and families, or all staff. So consideration of where we place a day of service for staff, Sunday being Easter Sunday right prior. Any questions around what we've done historically for spring break, keeping with that same pattern?
April 2023, Friday, Good Friday, the 7th?
Correct, we would have that off for all students and staff.
But then the next year, you would use Monday, April 1st as potentially a staff day?
Potentially, that Good Friday is falling on the 29th, so we would have that, right now, we have it considered, I would get some more input from staff regarding that. That was a piece where they said that they didn't feel that the spring break they needed that extension of, so we could really look at that either way.
I got it, so.[1745.94]
So at least with clarity.
March of 2023, you still have five days of spring break?
Correct.
March of 2024, you still have five days of-
Correct. Correct, with a potential for six there, just depending on where we place a potential day maybe for staff. I'd like a little further feedback on that piece. But again, at least that last full week in March. And again, I would foreshadow that for families Wednesday so they can dig in and give us some feedback. But just calling out that nuance of Good Friday falling within and outside. And then certainly Memorial Day being observed by all, whether it's students or staff. So when you look at calendar development, we certainly look at minutes of instruction, hours of instruction, days of instruction. Currently, we have about 173 instructional days for our student. I would want to look at and work with that school team on pushing in a couple more days. We need to be in attention to on October, March, kind of April, May, so that about once a month, we have the opportunity for staff to have a mix of work time, professional learning time, that application, so that they're able to do their work as well. So that's what I'd be seeking that on.
When does school end in these calendars?
Once we look at, like I said, right now, we're running on about 173 days. Generally, I'd look at about 175 days, so we've got a cushion in there for our, any potential snow day, et cetera, so we don't have to create a disruption unnecessarily to families. So we would look at adding just a couple more days in that. It would put you probably at that tail end. You'll see June ends that second week there, like that 8th, 9th. Kind of still within that range, so we can look at that a little bit more. You have to calculate minutes of instruction, which are different by elementary, middle, and high. What you don't want to do is cut short one and impact families in an odd way like, oh, I have to hold an elementary day but not a high school day and that kind of thing. So as part of the next presentation, I'll go through all the instructional minutes, all the hours of instruction, and the days of instruction too. But I'd work that committee. We'd get some interim feedback out in our- So this Wednesday, I'd like to take the breaks, the start dates, all that, get further information from our families. Then the calendar committee would put in front of all of our staff for feedback where these extra days might fall. And then we could actually do a follow-up communication. We'll do newsletters every Wednesday, get that in front of our community again so that our next meeting, we can vote and formalize that. But I think with certainty, we can put the winter breaks, the start dates, et cetera, in front of our families so they can start planning for things. They like to book those things in advance. One of the things I'd like to bring attention to, I talk about the days of instruction, hours of instruction. One really unique thing here is one of our elementaries runs on a different schedule than the rest. So I don't know that everyone's aware of that. But Fair Park actually has a different start time than all the elementaries. That was driven historically by our buses. We've worked with Go Right Way and that is not necessary. They've looked at those routes. So right now, every other elementary starts at 8:45, goes till 3:30. Fair Park starts at 8:15 and goes to 3:00 P.M. So we looked at that. That is an opportunity. It could be cost-neutral to deliver that and align those. Right now, there's before and after-school care on that site. We wouldn't want to inconvenience families. They could align that coming into the next year. When Assistant Superintendent Sarno and I discussed this, I said I'd kind of bring it up during this part of the conversation. If we would like to do that, we feel that we would need to really survey, you know, provide the opportunity for a little bit of insight to our Fair Park families and survey them directly as this change would impact them. Is that something the board would like us to proceed with even asking or?
I've always thought our elementary schools started awfully late at 8:45, but my suggestion would be to look to move the other ones earlier, 8:15 to 3 instead of-
We could do that as well. So then I would put together, I would-
I don't know the impact that would take on busing and things, but-
Nope. We can look at that. We would work with Go Right Way to see if those routes and those were an option. And then I can provide an update in a next superintendent update around, is that an option? If it is an option, then we would put together some kind of survey of all of our families regarding that impact. Because what you don't want is any kind of negative impact to your families. Again, each of these sites has a wraparound program with before and after-school care. You want to make sure that even though that care is present, that something we adjust in this schedule doesn't incur a financial burden to them, that that change, again, that the hours are the same, they're just different. We want to make sure we wouldn't incur that. So I think that for follow-up, I would see if the reverse is true. Again, if you could align it the other way and then check with those partners around any financial implication, ensuring there's none, and then bring it as part of an update. And then the board can advise at that time if you'd like us to proceed with exploring further or surveying families.
I think you should also check with the county because I feel like there was something with the traffic in Fair Park that also had something to do with that having a different start time and also with the jail being right there and timing of different things. So I would just check. That might not be the case after, I think the county remodeled a few years ago. But I feel like historically, that might have also played a role, something, you know, because there's so much traffic around the courthouse. But now that Schmidt Road does not go through, maybe that's not as big of a deal and I don't know. So just double check.
We'll make sure and look into that. And then the only thing that we'll do is kind of explore some of those pieces and bring it back in the superintendent's update as a follow-up item. Any questions? Again, that timeline then is on Wednesday, I'll put this out to all families around these breaks, those pieces. I'll convene that committee to finalize those. Like I said, each calendar needs about four days pushed in for professional development based on our feedback. And then we'd put that out in front of all staff as a draft and our families as a draft. Get that so that we have that prior to our meeting, our next March board meeting where you could formally approve it. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, so we'll likely see this in the future agenda. Thank you. We'll move to the lifeguard compensation market analysis, and Mr. Hanson will lead us through that.
Relatively brief presentation. So we employ, you know, a lot of different types of positions. And as part of our pool, we actually have several different types of positions. We have pool workers who have more of a managerial responsibility there. And then we also have lifeguards. Lifeguards will work both the daytime during, whether there's activities happening in the pool or during our course time, our coursework through physical education classes. That during those classes, the best practice is to have a lifeguard on duty so that the teacher can focus on instructing and not be duly responsible for instructing and ensuring no one's drowning, right? So it's good to have a lifeguard on duty no matter what. So that's a practice that we follow because that is best practice. When, you know, the last couple of years have struck with inflationary pressures on wages, lifeguards is one of those areas that has been impacted heavily. We currently pay $1,350 for daytime lifeguards and $950 an hour for evening lifeguards, which we weren't having a problem filling prior to the pandemic. But now, everybody has driven up those wages for similar reasons to other discussions we've had earlier this year around positions in, you know, that wage range. So we did some study of some of the areas, businesses that have pools, found that in the last year, a lot of them have increased their pay for lifeguards and we are proposing an increase as well. We're proposing moving all lifeguards regardless of shift to $15 an hour. That's competitive with what, for example, the YMCA is now paying in the region as well as some others. The total projected cost, kind of a, well, you know, largest possible cost is about $2,900 in a year by making that move. I actually think it could end up being about budget neutral, and the reason is this. When we can't find a lifeguard, we actually pay one of our pool workers to be a lifeguard. So they'll do their management of the pool and then they'll stay and do lifeguarding. Well, they make a higher rate than that, so we end up overpaying for lifeguard service because of the demand. So I actually think that we may end up, you know, being very close to budget neutral with an adjustment like this. We would bring this forward for discussion today, action at the following meeting. One thing to be aware of is lifeguards, because they're providing a service that we provide in our pool to our whole community, are actually funded through Fund 80, our community service fund. So any adjustment that we make here doesn't actually impact the district's educational program budget. It's that Fund 80 budget. And in conversations with Mr. Sarno and in looking at our historical Fund 80 expenses, I actually think this would still fall within the existing Fund 80 budget that we've kind of already planned on. So wanted to bring that forth, not a huge dollar item, but one that's important because it's important for us to be able to consistently ensure that safe environment in our pools. Pool.
The city uses our pool for swimming lessons, correct?
Yes, they do.
And when the city recreation department is using our pool for swimming lessons, do they pay for guards or is it our pool, our guards?
It's our pool. We provide the guards and that's why we use that Fund 80 mechanism in order to fund it. Because it's a community service rather than a school service.
Are we struggling now to find guards?
Yes, we are.
Like, I mean-
So we are regularly using these two individuals who are our pool workers, who kind of do more of the management of the pool, to cover lifeguard shifts. So we're losing currently on the financial side of that. Certainly, they're very highly qualified lifeguards, but, you know, they obviously want to devote their time to, you know, the pool management and then not having, you know, those are, one of them is a teacher of ours who works full-time during the day and is putting in a lot of hours. In the evenings, it'd be great for her to be able to pull back a little bit and focus on the real purpose that she's there at the pool for.
Well, as we've discussed, I mean, we have to stay competitive or we're going to, you know, continue to lose in the employment game. So I understand the increase.
We fight for guards with city and with the Y, and that's just right here in West Bend. I wouldn't be surprised if we are fighting for guards with other high schools or community pools or whatever.
People will drive a few extra minutes to another high school if it means they're going to make four or five bucks more an hour.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So this is a discussion item. We'll see you back on a future agenda.
Yep. Plan will be for the next meeting.
All right. And we're on then to the next item, which is staffing plan 2022, 2023.
So there's two items in board docs for public viewing. The longer item is this one, which is a staffing report. It mirrors a similar report that you were presented with last year. It's pretty comprehensive of the number of employees, hours, FTE that we project for next year. I'm not going to go through line by line, 14 pages of this, but I have a short presentation to go through it. But what it does is it goes through first, some of the basic assumptions that we use to just certain formulas and things like that to determine certain types of staffing. It'll go through priorities in more detail, which I'll briefly cover tonight. And then it goes through building by building, number of sections, number of teachers, average class size. It goes through every core area, every elective area. It goes through every single student services support type role as well. And then we get into non-instructional staff towards the end of the report as well. So this document has the word "draft" written on it, and the reason for that is, you know, we are kind of always monitoring enrollment and registration in different areas and then responding as needed as we go. The key why we bring this up first at this point is that we're coming near the time when the district has to make decisions on certified staff contract renewals. So those decisions have to be made in April based on statutory timelines around non-renewal and times to renew contracts and those sorts of things. So the biggest focus of us right now is how many certified staff members we will need in the coming school year. In terms of the hourly and support staff individuals, we will continue to monitor that and follow up with that as we go. So I'm going to jump over here to the presentation because I try to summarize a lot of information in that report in here. Tonight really is introduction, discussion, and then we'll return to this at a future board meeting because there's a lot of information in that report. So a real quick review of what we talked about the last time we gathered. I talked about priorities and key decision-making drivers. There are three decision-making drivers, as I mentioned last time, really don't change from one year to the next. We focus on students first and foremost. That's why we exist. And then we adapt to both the enrollment situation as well as the budget. We talked about all the different things that student needs can encompass, including academic support, student services-type supports, and the ways that we ensure equitable, equal access to education to all of our learners regardless of need. We then did a quick review of enrollment. We talked about how enrollment is really hitting its flattening out point at the elementary level. And then we will see it continue, the decline enrollment trend continue to matriculate up through the rest of the system. What we do have, see this year is we'll get into elementary levels is we're really hitting that last year of significant section FTE changes and home rooms at the elementary level, kind of hitting the bottom. You know, there's always going to be occasional bubbles and things like that. But really now, we are starting to see things move up through all the other levels. And then we talked about that third decision-making driver, those budgetary considerations. We talked about how the state budget is going to be flat for a third year. We'll have, third year in a row, have the same, you know, state budget total revenue that we can pull in. That's pretty unprecedented. There hasn't been a three-year kind of consistent level like that to my knowledge in maybe the last 30 years. So we have to be mindful of what that means for us. We talked about how just like everybody at home is struggling with the inflationary pressures going on, the district also experiences those and the need to be able to adjust to those. And then, as was also spoken of earlier today, the need to consider that federal support that the state legislature has indicated schools should rely on at this time is not a recurring piece. And while, you know, the legislature may replace the void that's created when that goes away, we have to be mindful of all the types, all the different contingencies that could take place a year from now when the biennium really starts to be debated. So as we look ahead to what's in the staffing plan, again, I'm just going to pull out a few big themes to lead us in discussion and then lead you as you take time to reflect on the staffing plan on your own. So the priorities, and there's more detail given to these in the staffing plan document, but really pulled out five big priorities for us. So the first is around opportunities for students. This staffing plan preserves all existing educational program pathways that exist at all levels, whether you're talking about elementary, art, music, physical education pathways and the co-curriculars there, all the way up through our Silverbrook Orchestra, choir, band, three-world language offerings that then follow all the way through the system, whether you're talking about all our myriad of CTE offerings such as technical education, business ed, family consumer science, and all the other elective offerings, continuing all of those pathways. Class size, big priority for us is maintaining within the historical norm range on class sizes. So this is designed to continue that. The, in terms of student services supports, we've really, in the last couple of years, been able to invest in developing some really strong, pretty comprehensive teams at each site that work on those student services-type needs, emotional needs of students and those sorts of things. Being able to maintain that and not saying, well, we could go without this one position here and this one here, really trying to bring all those different talents at the different positions, like a psychologist, a school counselor, a family liaison, alternative education coordinator, all those positions that they bring to the table, having that available at the appropriate levels as a team. Stewardship, you know, we need to adapt to declining enrollment, right? A decline enrollment means that fewer FTE are generally needed. This staffing plan reflects that. While maintaining all of those pieces that I talked about earlier, we've continued to adjust staffing each year that we've seen declining enrollment affect us and will continue to do that. If we don't, we're not being good stewards of the resources put before us and we would be setting ourselves up for a fiscal cliff in the future. We need to make sure we adapt little by little each year as those opportunities present. And then finally, sustainability. We want to be mindful of our future finances. I, you know, foreshadowed the federal funding eventually, you know, going away. We don't want to implement a bunch of new programs that require all kinds of training and onboarding this year if we can't at least sustain it for a couple of years, right? We don't want to invest all of that only to maybe pull it away one year later. So really thinking about, okay, are we putting forth things that we can sustain at least on multiple years and not pretending that the federal dollars are going to be around infinitely because we know that they won't be? So those are some of the priorities that drove the decisions there. I have a couple of pages around some big themes that came out of all of our meetings that led to the development of the staffing plan. So to develop the staffing plan, we have several meetings, both at the cabinet level. I meet with each of the school leaders at a level-by-level. We have elementary team meetings with all those elementary principals. We have Silverbrook level meetings with their administrative team, Badger administrative team, and then the high school team as well. I meet with the student services team several times as well. It's really a lot of different information gathering pieces that come together. So already talked about, you know, we are the only district in the area who is able to offer those three levels of music as early as fifth grade and even at the high school level is pretty rare to be able to offer both band, choir, and orchestra. So our staffing plan ensures that we can maintain that. I think that's one of the big draws of what we're able to provide, especially at the Silverbrook level that people can't find elsewhere. And then tied with that, that three-world language offering piece, we are committed to as well and maintain that as well. You know, you go to a lot of places, you're going to see one or two languages offered. Three is really something very special that we do here in West Bend. And then honestly, we have even more offerings technically because through the virtual program that our program administrator, Aaron Faust, has developed, we can offer even more through that as well, through a virtual environment. So really proud of those opportunities. We continue to see growth in student services department supports. So we, over the last few years, have increased the number of psychologists, the number of family liaisons, the number of staff members, both certified and support staff involved in alternative education needs and those sorts of things. We continue to see the demand for that and the staffing plan responds to that. The plan also talks about what I already referenced was sustaining those- The plan also talks about what I already referenced was sustaining those, those teams of, of individuals, even at an elementary level. It is pretty special that we can offer a counselor, a psychologist, and a family liaison to partner with the principal to take on those, those needs and, and wrap around students and families to provide them the resources that are available to them that often they may not even be avail, aware are, are there to be utilized. So it maintains that. Our virtual program this year has been extremely effective and efficient in terms of both dollars and just the efficiency of dollars has been outstanding. Mrs. Faust has put together a really outstanding program with some excellent communication and layered supports, both for regular education as well as special education students who are utilizing our virtual program. If you look in the staffing plan document later, you'll see that the number of students enrolled in the virtual program is, it's around 170 students, and, and we've really put together a really effective program and learned a lot from the last few years of the pandemic of how to do that. We also, as I've mentioned before, implemented a process this year to adjust paraprofessional support time to schools as enrollment fluctuates during the year. A process like that didn't really exist previously, but during the pandemic, we've also seen much more fluctuation right before the start of the year as well as throughout the school year in class sizes, both because of enrollments in and, and withdrawals in and out of the district. So we will continue to respond in that way, and I, we are allocating, I think we're around a half dozen additional paraprofessionals this year that we added just based on some of those adds and drops so that teachers weren't just left to say, well, you have a bigger class, deal with it. That's not our approach to this, right? We want to be able to respond. And it's been, you know, a challenging hiring environment, but we've been able to fill most of those roles or find qualified substitutes to take that on. Some of the other themes, something really exciting we're seeing in our high school continuing to blossom and really boom this year is student interest in our CTE areas is just exploding. We've always had a strong CTE set of offerings and programs, but we're going to need to add another tech ed teacher at the high school, giving us eight tech ed teachers alone. I do not know of another high school anywhere within dozens and dozens of miles around us that has anywhere near eight tech ed teachers. And we're seeing that interest grow in all the areas, from woodworking to welding to automotive to visual arts and things like that. It's really outstanding. Those teachers have been really working hard to help students understand all the pathways that, that kids can follow if they get into those programs, and we see kids getting involved in those at younger and younger ages. We offer tech ed all the way back at Badger. It's kind of an introductory survey kind of approach so that by the time they're getting ninth grade, you've already got kids saying, man, I want to get deep into video production and things like that. And we have such a thorough track of courses that kids see these opportunities and how they lead right into either college work or career work post, post nine 12. So we're really excited to add a position there. And kudos to actually all of our CT areas because they continue to do a great job promoting what, to students what those programs can do. We see that the decline enrollment trend is really now starting to impact kind of all levels. I highlight kind of a general homeroom or core, non-core FTE adjustments that we do foresee in the staffing plan, and I, I think we will continue to see, especially at the five 12 level, year after year, a gradual reduction in those number of sections until we finally hit that bottom, which like we said, we were already starting to see in kind of our youngest five grades. As I've said before, when those reductions are necessary, our first choice is obviously to use attrition to, to resolve those, whether that's retirements or resignations, those sorts of things. You know, we accepted another retirement tonight. At this point, we would like to see some additional attrition in order to meet all the needs that we have. You know, we're still seeing fluctuations in some of the registrations and things, so we're not, you know, at the spot yet where we need to determine right now a reduction. But like I said, those are decisions that are made late March, early April, per the statutory timelines around that. Our special education enrollment increased substantially this year. So while we've seen a declining enrollment trend as a system, we've seen an increasing enrollment trend in special education. We had a lot of new students with special education needs move into the district this year. That, I want to thank Emily Melstrand, the Director of Student Services, because her team and I worked really closely to really redo our formula for the district, which hadn't been looked at in several years, and we added a lot of special education staff. I highlighted that at our last meeting, both in terms of teachers and aides, and we need to maintain that, to, to maintain the programming for those students. We also are continuing to see an increase in the enrollment of English learners across the system and at all age groups. We've seen, we, we've increased the number of ELL techs that we have. Those are individuals that speak the specific languages. We've seen an increase in the need for ELL teachers as well. And I know Ms. Mel, Ms. Melstrand, in her plans, is also looking at how she has some of the funding available to her and how she can use that to enhance our services because this is a growing need in our community that sometimes people probably are unaware of, but it certainly is something that needs specialized staffing to meet the needs of. So those are some of the big themes that I pulled out. Like I said, you're looking at a 14-page document full of tables and spreadsheets and, you know, makes person like, brings joy to a person like me, but not the average person. So it takes time to really go through, but wanted to be able to put some of that information out there, answer kind of any initial questions so that you then have time to kind of dig in and see what we're looking at as, you know, staffing is the number one expense by far of the district. So we need to make sure we handle these decisions in a very careful and thoughtful manner.
Kurt, go ahead.
So if I'm just summing it up here on the last slide 10, looks like you're foreshadowing negative seven kind of full-time equivalent classroom teachers primarily driven by the reduction in students.
Those are driven by reduction in student, but also, you know, shift in, in registration trends at the secondary level, right? Like we see, you know, when more and more kids are signing up for tech ed offerings, there's other elective offerings maybe they're not choosing, right? So like we have a plus in tech ed, for example, and we have a partial increase in business ed, right? But that then often trades off with, you know, in, in other elective areas where maybe they don't register, right? They only have so many periods of, of the day to take courses, so.
Yeah, so at least I thank the district for noticing the challenges of funding challenges going forward, and I like that we're being proactive here. Just want to comment on your presentation. Seen a lot of presentations, maybe for Lenny's background, knowing Lenny for, just getting to know him from being a school board member here. You were in private, kind of preschool, you ran a private preschool.
Preschool and Family Resource Center in the nonprofit in Milwaukee, yep.
And then you were a principal at Jackson Elementary.
Actually, I taught for six years and then became the principal in Jackson and then moved over here to Human Resources.
Okay. Well, thank you for, I know you're working with a team on your administrative level, but I thank you for a great presentation. I would just add thoughts, what I hear from the districts is CT is important. Our offerings are important at, so even expanding on C, CET, just making people job-ready, especially in today's environment, of good-paying jobs that are escalating at rates that aren't in certain industries. So I encourage all the students to, to go under there that I talk to that have those abilities and that need, and I love that we're maintaining at least our early music, language, culture in the early, in the early grades. So those are my comments.
And, you know, CTE and tech ed, you know, sometimes people think that, that's woods and welding, but there's so much more, and I really encourage anybody watching at home. We have a lot of information on the website. There's a great video, maybe six minutes long, from one of our tech ed teachers that highlights all the pieces. I mean, you're talking about, yes, you're talking about some things that are very hands-on, like automotive and things like that. You're also talking about some very technical type activities as well. You know, our business ed program in CTE, those lead to careers in accounting and finance and things like that. There's a real, you know, wide range of things. Our Family Consumer Science, I think you'd be amazed at the, the variety of offerings and careers that leads to, and we're increasing the number of classes. You know, we have a lot of classes in those areas that are running for the first time. They were approved several years ago, but now we're finally having kids kind of hit the end of that track where we can launch some really exciting technical college credit courses and things like that that they lead into. So it's an exciting time for CTE in our district. And I want to give kudos to Mr. Hurd, I don't know if he's sitting back there or not, but he's played a huge role in partnering with the high school over several years, along with the Curriculum and Instruction Department and Laura Jackson in bringing all those great ideas to fruition. Because everybody's got ideas, but it takes a lot of work to actually make them happen. Also want to point out that the reductions you see there are kind of summaries of kind of core homeroom type reductions. There are other adjustments in that staffing plan, but those are the ones that often stand out to people the most, kind of those, you know, primary core elective roles. So I highlighted those, but there's quite a bit of other information in the, the full document to review around those.
So Lenny, in the tech ed area, great to see, you know, increasing interest, demand, what have you, and shifting from the staffing side over to the facility side. You know, thinking about the, the woods area, the auto shop, welding, machining down there and so forth, are we potentially at risk where we don't have enough space? Might we, you know, need another section and we just don't have availability in the calendar and the clock to, to get that, that section into a particular area of the tech ed program?
Mr. Hurd and I had that conversation. We are good with one more teacher. If we have to add a ninth, then we're going to have to have some tougher talks because we have the space, and honestly, I can't think of many high schools out there that have the space for eight tech ed teachers. So I think we're thankful to have that. But yeah, if this continues to expand, we'd have to think about some much larger needs. And obviously, tech ed classrooms are not simply four walls and a few desks, right? There's a lot of equipment and a lot of types of space. They're much larger spaces.
And just to add to that, not just those technical spaces, but the offerings that we have aren't without partnership with having Marine Park Technical College in our backyard. Our kids who are building the tiny house are doing it at Marine Park. When we don't have something, they are incredible partners in that, or even our, our community partners in our job placements, in those, the exposure to different machines, et cetera. So certainly, we do not host all that onsite. When you talk about being stewards of, of community dollars, we work with those partners so that we're both not duly investing, that we're creating those spaces together to serve kids and community. But we certainly couldn't have all these offerings without that partnership, those classrooms as well at our disposal.
Well said. Thank you.
So just for people watching, I, I wouldn't want anyone to freak out and say, oh my God, we're getting rid of, you know, seven teachers. So maybe just to kind of explain, obviously, some of this is natural, right? We'll have some retirements. We might have some people moving. There are some ways to reassign people. Obviously, though, if I teach kindergarten, tech ed is probably not in my wheelhouse, so I, I'm staying in the elementary areas. Maybe just, can you give us a little conversation about that? And it might be a little premature because I'm sure not everyone has announced retirements or any of that stuff yet.
Correct. So we have several tools we'll use first. So the first is one-year contracts. So when we hire a, a teacher, excuse me, late in the hiring season, it's pretty typical in all school districts that you just offer a one-year con, non-renewing contract. So our first step is first to, you know, those individuals were, we would offer them, if we had a position, the opportunity to reapply, but we probably just don't post the position, right? And we just reassign and, and move things around. So we have several one-year contracts throughout the system, K-12, both in kind of core areas as well as in special education, so we use those first. We then, you know, turn to those retirements, which we've received several. So we'll then look at those as positions that we don't fill. If you do have resignations of people just going to other positions in other districts or other fields of work, we'll use that next. That doesn't happen very often. You know, I talk up here very frequently about how we have the best teacher retention rate in the county, and we're very proud of that, and we want to maintain that. But that, so resignation isn't often a piece that, that gives us a, a lot to work with, but it's, it's, you know, occasionally there. We'll deal with those. Then we'll look at those transfer opportunities, right? I mean, part of the, the benefit of us being the district that has so many types of, different types of offerings, because don't forget, we also have our early learning offerings and Head Start and things like that. Sometimes there's opportunities to move out throughout those areas. We'll have individuals who may be our regular ed teachers, but they happen to have a reading license. We have an opening over here in reading intervention, right? So we'll look for those opportunities as well. You know, we want to, as any way possible, find a landing spot for people if we can, while also, you know, we need to abide by, you know, our policies in terms of how we handle reductions in forces and things like that. Certainly, we also need to do what's best for students, right? So we do consider, you know, okay, this person is a lifelong kindergarten teacher, right? They might happen to be licensed through 12th grade and something, but if you've never taught that, I'm not sure that that's, you know, what's best for students, right? So we have some tough decisions sometimes that come up in those situations, but again, we're, we're trying to do what's best for, for the staff and for students, while in the end, we have to land at a certain number of positions in order to, you know, deliver a balanced budget to the, to the, to the board and the community.
Other questions? All right, is this a discussion item? We'll certainly see this back. Thank you for the early peek.
Thanks.
All right. Next item is social studies, grades five through eight resources. I believe Dr. Jill Reese is going to walk us through that. Dr. Reese, good evening. Sorry, I said good evening when you were way in the back. Sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. This is just a real high-level overview, so I'm just sharing a bit of information, and then we will be bringing this back in April. So we've worked together to dig real deeply into the resources and to look into the McGraw-Hill Tools, based on several of the curriculum committee meetings we've had. We want to honor the idea for particularly our board members that are on the curriculum committee to have more time to look into the resources. In doing that, on the April curriculum committee meeting, we'll be bringing forward a document that aligns all of the feedback that we've gotten over the course of the last couple of months in one document and showcases the further investigation into all those different pieces of the feedback. And so that will put it succinctly in one place, and then we will share that at the curriculum committee meeting. And then we will also then look to bring forward to the full board more information in April about five, eight social studies.
Any questions? Sounds like the committee's taking, taking time and collecting feedback. Appreciate that.
Correct. It's a lot to go through. There's a lot of resources to look at. It's taken a lot to study, and so we want to honor their request to do that.
All right.
This is Tawny. I'd like to say something. I know the public has put a lot of time and effort into reviewing quite a bit of the, what's been presented, and I think it helps to, even trying to go through it. It is, it is, it is a lot to cover, so it, it is very important that we do get feedback from the public because it's, it's overwhelming how much there is to cover just for even just our committee for Erin and I. So in addition to getting feedback, it would be really helpful if we'd also get alternative suggestions instead of simply comments on what people don't like. I like to work from potential solutions. So we've gotten some recommendations for potential alternatives, but I'd like to see more of those, so we have more to look over and consider.
Great. Thank you, Tawny. Good suggestion. Other comments? All right. Dr. Reese, we appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to Head Start grant applications, refunding application, COLA application, and training and technical assistance application for 2022-2023. And Jamie Mossom, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to you guys. Tonight I bring forward for discussion the Head Start refunding applications as President Swiger just mentioned. It's a brief presentation this evening. There we go. It's important to note that next school year is the fifth year of a five-year grant cycle, so there are very minimal changes to all of these items we're going to discuss this evening. As you might recall, at the February 7th board meeting, I shared the results of the community and self-assessment. That piece really drives our refunding application, changes in our action steps mainly. The first discussion item this evening is our selection criteria. There are no changes to that piece. Basically, our students are selected in our program by the federal poverty guidelines, really drives that piece of it for us. The second discussion item is our refunding application. Again, there's no changes to that. Again, there's no changes to that. Next year, we will rewrite the entire grant for the next five-year cycle with new program goals. The third discussion item is the TTNA plan. Very minimal update there. We included professional learning communities to be a focus for our program for the upcoming school year. And the last discussion item is the COLA grant. So that's the cost of living. It's in addition to the base amount that the Office of Head Start provides our program every year. No changes there either. All right. A very brief overview of the refunding application. Our program goals, again, the professional learning communities is going to be a focus, and that's really to continue to support our, our idea of how important collaboration and co-teaching is for our program. The service delivery model, I think, is something that our program celebrates as much as possible because we serve all of our students inclusively, and we're able to do that with continued partnership of the West Bend School District Early Education Program. And family engagement. As you can imagine, and we discussed during the community and self-assessment presentation, it's been a challenging couple of years to get families involved in our program because it's mostly virtual right now. So we are working on a reboot for in-person parent events next school year. There's a kind of a quick overview of our budget. It is balanced. Again, you can see the base grant is the federal piece there. Our training and technical assistance grant, which gives us approximately $17,000 for professional development and coaching and pieces like that. And I think that's about it. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Not too many changes this year, but next year, when the grant has to be completely rewritten and renewed, is that quite a process to go through?
I'll let you know. Yes, it is. It is. I think, you know, our areas of focus continue to be co-teaching, collaboration, language and literacy, and then, you know, providing those inclusive learning environments. Those pieces aren't going to change as much, but I anticipate other things will.
Is everybody in the state who has or runs a Head Start program on that same calendar? Does everybody have a grant renewal at the same time?
They do, and it's due to the Office of Head Start by April 1st. And that's why this is kind of a busy year for Head Start. We're hoping to bring these items for action at the board meeting on the 21st, so that we can get all that information to the Office of Head Start by April 1st. But to answer your question, yes, we're all on the same.
How about for next year, for rewriting the whole grant? Yes.
Same. Yeah.
Jamie, you ticked through the list of items that we're not changing, selection criteria, refunding application, et cetera. And I'm presuming that's because we're happy that it's, that those criteria, et cetera, are functioning as expected?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Other questions? All right. Is this a discussion item? We'll see this back on another agenda as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion item regarding school fees. Mr. Andy Sarno is going to walk us through that. Mr. Sarno, good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Wimmer, thank you for the opportunity to share some information. Student fees are a part of the Wisconsin Constitution. There's even a piece of it I've linked in the supporting documentation. The DPI Department of Public Instruction School Fee Website speaks about legislature shall provide by law the establishment of school districts. Such schools shall be free without charge, so not to be in conflict with FAP, otherwise known as Free and Appropriate Education. It does allow school districts to charge fees to help supplement programs. This is for discussion only this evening. We would take any discussion into consideration, bring that forward. I think one of the big goals of this evening, this has not been as transparent as it should be, where we have not made any changes since the last time this came forward for your awareness and action. It has not been a public annual event. So in, I will in just a moment, share the document that was attached to this agenda item, just a little bit of background information. Like, as I'd mentioned, Constitution speaks of this. Materials inclusive of instructional, club-related, field trips, sports, particular classes that have specialized items, records fees, health services, these are things to also supplement programs, and the dollars that are allocated to those specialized in particular classes. We can and we often do waive fees. Many of the ones on the list that I'll share in a moment, related to families with meal assistance, otherwise known as free and reduced, where they have to fill out a special form that goes with their application. We have very, very few individuals that have access to that information. We handle it in a confidential manner, both the free and reduced application for meal assistance, as well as the waiving of the fees. Coaches, schools regularly do not have access to that information, but many of these fees, though, are waived. This is not related to items that could be damaged, lost, or stolen. This is only particular to fees themselves, but the only one, and I'll share that in a minute, it's the last fee that I have on the list.
Andy, can you just do me a favor and speak up or move that mic in just a bit closer?
Absolutely. It's a little bit quiet tonight. I will, I will, I will use the diaphragm. Thank you. I'm going to jump into the document. So this is an attachment. I had the document uploaded as of the end of last week, and then I did as well earlier today, include Silverbrook's information. At many of our schools, and we have a 4K instructional material fee, as well as an elementary, an intermediate, a high, middle school, as well as a high school instructional material fee, ranges from $25 up to $65, excuse me. And I will share, I have a separate document for the high school, so I don't want to speak of that. But at the Badger Middle School, it goes up, goes up to $60. As well, several of the schools have a T-shirt or a field trip, and they handle things just a little bit differently with our PTOs and how they impact some of the T-shirts and even just a little bit of money that's related to the field trips. The PTOs often supplement, or they give money that gets put towards this, but some of the schools have a little bit of a dollar amount that's collected. Silverbrook has their T-shirt, PE T-shirt, $4 each. Again, these are waived for families that do qualify. Both Silverbrook as well as the high school, they have a two-lock. It's for the PE locker as well as the normal locker. That's the, oddly enough, there's an $11 Silverbrook padlocks fee, as well as a Badger, $12. And I can chalk that up to kind of a rounding fee and what they, what they pay for those in reselling that. At Silverbrook as well as Badger, they have a yearbook that's optional, not required, but I wanted to disclose that. $15 for each of those materials. And then we do have athletic fees that are charged at Badger of $65. Silverbrook is beginning a, a club-sport program at this time. I did not include that, and I apologize. I'll make sure that that lands in the next, and I believe it's $10 or $15 that they're charging for that. $15, I think.
It's right into that 10 to 15, depending on sport. So they're working on kind of a break-even program to build foundational sports. It's a full intramural program. Mr. Bell spoke just briefly to it, but we can make sure and get those, because I think it's a little bit of a range.
Thank you.
And it's a wonderful opportunity for other high school students to volunteer, get some hours in over there, contact Mr. Bell.
I'm going to click, before I click on the high school, and I've got that linked in the document here, but the district-wide, and where I'd mentioned about the only one that we're talking about, and I would like to maybe work with Silverbrook Badger on that locks, it's a dollar, align that to the same dollar amount. There isn't a reason for that. Mr. Harder in Technologies indicated the Chromebook insurance where we offer this. It's $10 currently, he's not asking for any type of increase at this point in time, but he did mention, just to give a heads up, and this is why it's important to share this, allows families time to understand and allow us to get these fees incorporated into any other materials. So one of the things that Mr. Harder indicated is, we are seeing a higher level of breakage. The other item as well is the cost of those devices that he's purchasing that are covered under this last one. I'm going to scroll down here. The $10, they're increasing, not quite exponentially, but they've increased notably. He will be considering an increase for the 2023, 2024 school year. I did have, and I'll speak separately on this document, it's hyperlinked.
Mr. Harder, is that insurance, I assume we are self-insuring, correct?
This was a document that was drafted up by the two high school principals. They've consulted their different teams. So parking fee, $125. Yearbook, again, optional, $57. So they even included a column here that indicated whether it's required, or I apologize if I'm talking, I've got a bit of a cold. Athletic fees. Then they start to get into some of the class-specific types of things with ceramics, their graduation for seniors, other instructional materials. As I indicated, Badgers at $65, the high schools at $85. Other classes related, some of those CTE courses, chemistry goggles, which is a safety thing, again, things that supplement, supplement the instructional, as well as some of the co-curricular related items.
And I think one of the biggest things you spoke briefly to is, if any student or family feels that the financial piece is going to be a burden to participation in any way, shape, or form, in whether it's an extracurricular item, just the general fees, simply reach out to your school principal or to one of us directly. We can help navigate that process to provide waivers or relief. We don't want personal financial circumstances to prevent any student from participating in any way. So just feel free to reach out confidentially to one of us, and we can help you navigate that process as well.
I appreciate that explanation. I was looking at the list of items on the high school, and I think it's the second last one is chemistry goggles, and that, speaking from the insurance perspective, very important. So I think what you're saying is, if somebody, for whatever reason, seems modest, but I know there are different people in different life circumstances, but someone's unable to afford that, but they're in chemistry class, they're going to get goggles.
Correct. And we'd certainly have loner pairs, just like we'd have a loner if a student forgot their Chromebook, et cetera. They wouldn't be without necessary items, but those are generally a personal, personal fit, personal style sometimes. I've seen some. They can buy those on their own, but we also provide them for purchase if they need them.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sarno?
I don't, yeah. Again, for discussion only tonight, and doesn't have to necessarily be here, but if you do have any other discussion tonight or between now and the next meeting, I'd incorporate that into a recommendation to be brought forward for your vote.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. And next, Mr. Tim Harder is going to walk us through Family Computer Science, the Culinary Curriculum Resource, which is a bit of a tongue twister. Good evening.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So this evening, I'm in front of you for discussion only, no action requested this evening yet, that would be at our next board meeting, to talk about our culinary resources. So we have a phenomenal culinary program at our high school. It capstones with a student-run restaurant that our students and staff and visitors to the high school can eat three days a week at. And as part of that, when we started our culinary program years ago and looked at new curricular materials, we've had a push to increase and provide our students industry-recognized credentials. And so one of them that we offer through the culinary program is through the National Restaurant Association, is called Pro Start. And so our students can sit for that exam at the end of their year, they can take that, and that's something that they can carry on into any local business that they want to work in. And the distinguishing point about the Pro Start certificate versus what most people know as the Serve Safe Certificate, when you work in a restaurant, is Pro Start's about leadership and running and managing a restaurant. It's not just about those day-to-day operations of, oh, you know, I have to have this to a certain temperature, I'm going to keep this cooler at this temperature, et cetera. And so with that, we are proposing to continue utilizing that certification for our students, but with that, we need to upgrade to the newest version of the curricular materials that go with that. And so the spreadsheet that you see up on the screen is the cost of the textbooks, the student activities, the teacher resource to replace what we currently have, just with the newer version, to meet those needs. And so we no longer would be able to offer that Pro Start certification without updating our curricular resources at that point in time. But all of that is backed by the National Restaurant Association, who kind of pulls together the Pro Start curriculum and that articulation piece. So if there's any questions, I'll gladly answer, and if not, we would come back at the next board meeting asking for your approval of the purchase of those items.
Great. Any questions?
Do you know how long we've had the current set of materials?
I don't off the top of my head, but I'm, you know, we talked about this at CNI alone, we're going to keep these textbooks for five or six years at minimum.
Okay. That was my next question, because it would be quite a racket if they said that you cannot get the certification without the latest and greatest, and they did it every year, but that is not the case.
And we're only looking at classroom sets here, so we're not doing individual students, they're just using them in the classroom. So instead of, there's 60 kids in there, we're only, you know, buying the 30 for that second level at that point in time, so.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a general question on numbers. I know, just from being up in high school, it's a very popular destination for students to go and a very popular course selection for practical training. How many students are we talking that generally take a culinary course during a given year?
You're throwing me for a number. I'm going to kind of aim at the wall here, Kurt, a little bit. So I know some of our introductory culinary courses run 20, 20 sections total between the two, so you're talking 25 kids in each one of those classes. As you start getting into that higher level, culinary one, culinary two, where they're working in the restaurant, there may be one or two sections of those, you're looking at 20-some kids in there who are rotating themselves through, but you're seeing hundreds of kids in our culinary program from that introductory, personal culinary skills course all the way through up to, we have a food services co-op that we offer for our students, which means they're basically, they're working for us under co-op or youth apprenticeship, or they're going out in the community and working and earning that credit at that point in time. So we're talking hundreds of kids that start that program.
Hundreds of kids, and I know a couple of them in the community, and they're doing quite well. So the question, if you don't know this now, maybe for next time, is how many people get their certification?
Yeah, I can find that out for you. Absolutely.
Other questions? Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you next meeting. All right. And our last discussion item tonight is Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. Purpose, Formation, and Process. And Laura Jackson will walk us through that. Good evening.
Good evening. I get to speak with you tonight about the advisory committee. We have not had an advisory committee of this sort since 2014 in West Bend. And so we will be reviewing our human growth and development curriculum, and specifically that is a unit of study offered in fourth grade, fifth grade, and then in the health class that's currently taken between eighth grade and the 12th grade. So we have three health courses where we specifically have units of study on the human growth and development. What's included in that, in those units of study are reflected in the state statute that was part of the board information that you have. Also in the state statute is the requirement, when you're reviewing this, to have an advisory committee take a look at it. And that advisory committee is made up of members of the clergy, members of the medical field, it's made up of parents or guardians of current students, community members, and members from the school district. The statute requires that none of those groups can be larger than 25% of the committee, except for parents and guardians. And it also requires that this advisory committee is a board-appointed committee. So I will be sending out invitations in our district newsletter on Wednesday. That newsletter is available on the district website, goes to families through our normal communication methods, and members of the public will have also subscribed to that newsletter, so it will go out to them through that newsletter as well. Additionally, we'll have it on the district website, and it will go through our social media, so that those who are interested can apply to be part of the advisory committee. I would seek a committee- I would seek a committee membership of 15 to 20 individuals. The outline of each of the meetings is drafted in draft agendas that are presented in the packet that you have received through Board Docs, and they will tackle three kind of critical questions that we address with this committee. One, we review the statutory requirements, and does our curriculum and resources meet those statutory requirements? We look at the standards and the grade level outcomes that we're seeking when we review the curriculum. And then, is the human growth and development instruction age-appropriate? And so, those three things are kind of the big picture of what this committee will look at. We will, it's a short-term Advisory Committee, and then, they will give us feedback, which, before we do anything with the Human Growth and Development Committee, our curriculum, we will listen closely to that, to make sure, again, still age-appropriate, aligned to the requirements of the statute, and meeting the needs of our students. Do you have any questions about the Advisory Committee itself?
Sounds like this is statutorily driven. I'm following that process.
Yes.
Are there any members of this committee that we need to actively recruit, like members of the clergy and healthcare professionals?
I will be sending an invitation to all of the members of the clergy that are identified at the churches, and at all religious organizations within our community. And so, they will get a direct invitation, because I, we need to recruit, yes. I'll watch to see what invitations are coming, what responses we're getting, because again, if I have four parents only that can commit, that will limit the size of the other groups, because that group is the only one that can be over 25% of the committee.
Other questions? All right, we'll see this back on future agendas as well, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was the last discussion item, so we'll move to future agenda items. And the first one is the Board Calendar. I'm just pulling it up here. So, for our Board Calendar, we have our next three Board Meetings, March 21, April 4, and April 18, all scheduled at 5:30 PM, all here at the Education Service Center. Let's see, and just checking to see from committee dates if we have any committee meetings scheduled at this point. I don't. There it is, April 5th, Curriculum Committee. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, any additions to that calendar? Hearing none? Opportunity for any items for follow-up and communication? Any?
I just want to, yep, I just want to reiterate the ones that we heard. We needed follow-up to our community around the bus, and then keep that as a standing item in my report. A piece around the elementary start times, again, to be present in my future report around alignment. And then, in the CTE, Kurt had questions around number of students who receive their certification, as well as age of current materials. Those were all items that I noted specifically for follow-up.
Great, thank you. Any other items?
I just have one, since, thought that was an excellent way to kick off the meeting with our swim and dive team here. So, we had our gymnastics, if I'm keeping track, bowling, we recognized dance last time, we have our wrestlers, and we have our ski and snowboard, so are they?
So, they all get to come forward, but if you recall, we had quite the meeting last year where they all landed at one time, so we're going to break them up so that we can be in attention. So, tonight, you heard from three different groups, you had the Youth Impact Club Highlight, you had one piece of recognition, as well as your student reports, so we'll just balance that and get those other teams in front of you for specific recognition as well.
And the auto winners would be a last.
Yeah.
It would be nice to highlight those.
Well, as well as the number one in the state for the reading.
Yeah, the reading. Yes.
Great, thank you, Kurt. All right. We have reached the end of our planned agenda, and so, our last item to consider is adjournment. And so, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Motion and second to adjourn. I mean, last-minute, final discussion. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Dove? Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Mr. Ongert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes, yes. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And Ms. Justman. All right. That motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you to everyone who attended.
Everyone else has left the call.
Goodbye.
She didn't say goodbye, she just hung up.